We will call this meeting of the Select Board to order. Quick, first of all, we are being recorded on Zoom and on Sterling Lancaster Television. A roll call, Mr. Allison.
I am here.
Ms. Turner.
Here.
And I am here, so hail, hail, the gang's all here. The purpose of this meeting is relatively clear. It's to review and sign off on the warrant for the special town meeting, which you all have had for a good while in some iteration or not, and you haven't presented before you. There are 11 articles on the town meeting warrant. We, as a Select Board, can vote recommendations where appropriate for articles that we may be sponsoring or believe our recommendation might be valued by some. We do not need to do it today if we don't want to. We would just then list on the warrant that the public sees to be determined at town meeting next to a Select Board recommendation. So it does not have to be on there. The Finance Committee met on Friday evening and recommended favorably, Kate correctly or wrong, but all financial related articles, which are Articles 1, 8, 9, and 10, which as we'll review those, but for those paying attention at home, that are Bills of Prior Fiscal Year, Amend Our Budget for Fiscal Year 23, amend our fiscal year 23 capital expenses, and amend Water Enterprise Fund. We have to make a recommendation, again, it can be at town meeting, as a Select Board, on Articles 2, 4, and 11, because we are the sponsors of those. Number 2 is the Special Act to Affirm Results of the 2022 Annual Town Election. Number 4 is the Enterprise Rezone, and number 11 is the Reaffirm the Vote of the Annual Town Meeting. 18, Article 9, Removal of Police Chief Position from City Service. It would be best practice if we wanted to then make a recommendation on Numbers 1, 8, and 9 as well, but they're not, again, required.
Chairman Carrigan and Kate, can I interrupt for a minute? It's a, I was, yeah, I was just made aware that it doesn't appear that we're being recorded. Is that, it could be wrong.
Well, it's being.
Recording in progress.
It is being recorded at least by our friends at Sterling Lancaster TV, so all of that is covered in their recording. I believe that, or those are all of the, oh, so the Scribner's Notes, the Scribner's Errors, which are Articles 5 and 6, again, we'll review these all in order. Those were taken up by the Planning Board as well as the Solar Battery, which is number 7. So 5, 6, and 7 were considered by the Planning Board and put on this warrant, so.
I didn't hear you mention, sorry, Article 3.
And Article 3 is my last one. We do not have to take a vote on whether or not to recommend Article 3, which is the 40R provision up in North Lancaster, but it may be good practice for us to do so.
We should be the proponents of Article 3.
I thought it was the Affordable Housing Trust, but, yeah. So we will take a vote either today or at a town meeting on whether or not to recommend. Fantastic. So are we, any questions on the process before, and then we have, do we have one consideration from the town moderator, which we will take at the end of the meeting, just a process provision? Any questions before we go through these, one item at a time? And again, Thursday, November 3rd, at the Old Town Hall, there'll be a forum for the public who won't get, can't get enough of these warrant articles, will have a chance to hear just the facts on each of these articles. And then at the end of this meeting, we'll have a chance to discuss, as a board, any number of things, but this is a one item agenda, and this is the item.
So Steve, since you mentioned the forum, just so we're on the same page, I take forum, and I assume it's at Old Town Hall, so people can come in person and as a Q and A, we present, they ask us questions, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so the point of it, and this comes from citizens who wanted something like this, is to present the facts of what does in plain English, which hopefully we'll cover today, in plain English, what does Article 2 mean, or what does Article 8 mean, rather than just showing up at a town meeting and getting something like this and being forced to digest it all just before voting. So the idea of that, what it is not designed to be is for opposing sides to get up and go back and forth about the merits of the warrant article, it's just to explain the warrant article and then answer any questions to explain it further in plain English, not to debate. There's plenty of time at the town meeting to debate the articles, that's the right forum for that, this is not the time for it. Apparently, what, something I said was hilarious.
So procedurally, we're going to go one through the end?
Starting, whenever you guys are done, any questions about the process?
I'm ready to go.
Okay, and I gather SLC TV or somebody's recording the forum for those who can't attend it, right?
They will, we've reached out to them about broadcasting.
Okay. Go to the record, we're not calling it a forum. What are we calling it?
Okay.
It's just a warrant review.
Fine. Call it a spatula, as far as I'm concerned, because that's what we're doing. No further questions. All right, let's start at the very beginning, because it's a very good place to start.
I knew you were going to say that.
All right, Article 1. It is to pay bills of prior fiscal year sponsored by the Select Board to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $2,564.82 or any other sum of money from available funds to pay unpaid bills from fiscal year 2022 or act in any manner related thereto. The three items are, two are public buildings items, one is a Sterling Municipal Light bill there, the vendor for maintenance bill of $1,125.81. Another is for Four Seasons Comfort, which I believe is a HVAC, yeah, $180 for them, and then the final one is the Fire Department Central Mass EMS Corporation for Maintenance, My understanding, Kate, is that this just happens almost every year, where it's a bill that comes in after the close of the fiscal year, but it is for things incurred in the previous fiscal year.
Yeah, so Sterling Light was basically the aggregate amount that's due after all of our net metering, so that doesn't come in usually until June. Four Seasons Comfort was for a leak that was in the town clerk's HVAC that took a while to diagnose, and that didn't come in. And then Central Mass EMS is the ambulance billing, and that didn't actually come in until August.
Okay. All right, any questions about that?
Yeah, Kate, thanks for the explanations. The dates beside the, for example, Sterling Municipal Light, January 1st, 2022, I know that bills end on June 30th, what does, what does a date reflect?
That's the date that's on there anyways. They're taking it for a calendar year. We have them bill it twice a year.
Okay.
All right.
It's not the date we received it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions on Article 1? Do you have any questions on Article 1? Now, this is a process piece I probably should have taken prior to starting, but is it the board's desire to?
I move to endorse Article 1.
Okay.
Affirmative action.
Take affirmative action, yeah.
I'm sorry, I moved for the board to take affirmative action.
Recommend affirmative action at the town meeting.
Somebody write that down for me. I move to recommend the board to take affirmative action at town meeting.
For the board to take affirmative action?
My understanding is the board is recommending that the town meeting take affirmative action on the article.
That's what they said.
That's what he said, your second.
I, that's correct, second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all those in favor, Jason.
Aye.
Alex, Steve, aye. Okay, 3-0-0, we're cruising. All right, you okay if I proceed?
Yes, sir.
Article 2, Special Act to Affirm Results of the 2022 Annual Town Election. Select Board is the sponsor of this, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board on behalf of the town to petition, to petition the General Court for passage of a special law as set forth below, provided, however, that the General Court may make clerical or editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill before enactment by the General Court, and provided further that the Select Board is hereby authorized to approve amendments which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of this petition or act in any manner relating thereto. An act validating the results of the annual town election held in the town of Lancaster, Section 1, notwithstanding any general or special law or bylaw to the contrary, all acts and precedents taken by the town of Lancaster at the May 9, 2022 Annual Town Election, and all actions taken pursuant thereto are hereby ratified, validated, and confirmed, notwithstanding omissions with respect to the posting of the annual election warrant and related voter information. Section 2, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
What a order.
Yes.
You're not intending to read every one of these, are you?
It's the board's wish.
Word for word, don't think?
Well, it's the board's desire. I can waive the reading of the, at any moment, you can ask for waiving of the reading of the article.
Procedurally, is that?
Yes, you could, yes.
Okay, I'm okay with 2, but some of these are like.
I understand that.
They would beat Alex's record, the one she read at a town meeting.
I know, that was long.
Okay, I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article 2 at special town meeting on November 14th.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions. First, I think it's very important that we affirm the will of the people on the election. I just want to make sure that we do this. I know that we, as the board of selectmen, are responsible to call an election, and that it is published and enacted through other offices and within the town clerk's office. It's something that I thought that we missed, but I stand corrected, I did ask Kate, so I just wanted to make sure. Did we actually, did we actually vote this and post it? I freely admit my memory.
I just want, I want to point out, this, totally respect that, and we can get to an answer. This is not relevant to the motion on the floor, it's relevant to the issue and how we got to this, but just from a Roberts rules perspective, we're debating the motion on the floor, which is about this, so it's totally about.
But I would vote, if I didn't know we did it right, I wouldn't support the motion, and I want to support the motion, because I think it's important, too.
That's perfectly fine. Do you want to answer that question?
The Select Board called the election, I believe, in either November or December. The issue is that the clerk's office is contractually obligated to post the warrant 14 days before the election. That did not happen. It was posted six days before the election, and so we're issuing this, which is a, we checked with the Secretary of State's office, they said it's a procedural issue, it doesn't invalidate anything that was done, and it's just a rubber stamp.
So it's like you and Kendra are stuck.
I know, I was kind of hoping, we could have gotten out of it, but they didn't confirm the election. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 3-0-0, Article 3.
Can we not read?
At any moment, once I start, you can waive the reading of the article. Article 3.
I'd like to waive the reading of this nine-page article, please.
Is there a second to waiving?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on waiving, other than we don't want to read 10 pages? Waiving the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, we waive reading of the motion.
I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article 3 at special town meeting on November 14th, 2022.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the recommendation?
Yes.
Yes, did it?
I'm excited. I'm excited for the future of Lancaster, and this is, this is part of it, and that's the reason that I'm endorsing this article, but what's most important, I think, is that the residents will have an opportunity to vote, and, and they will, the residents will decide the future of Lancaster, and I think that's paramount, and I hope that all residents do take the time to read all nine pages of this article. And I would also like to thank the residents, y'all know who you are, who took the time to put all this together, so thank you to, to the town and the residents for doing that, and let's get a vote on it, and it's a special town meeting.
That's good. Any further discussion on the motion?
Um, yes. So would this be the appropriate time, if I had concerns, to voice those, this, or not?
The motion is, well, we recommend that you can say that you don't agree with the motion, you seconded the motion, but I'm assuming for the purpose of discussion, which is perfectly valid.
It's important to explain why I have concerns if I do, which I do. So, so my question concerning is, first, I want to have a caveat, but I think that the Affordable Housing Trust has done a commendable job, and probably been the most efficient board that I have seen in a long time in drafting this and working for the best interest of Lancaster. When we talked about doing this and the enterprise zoning, which is coming up as a board prior to your time, we talked that we would have agreed upon memorandums of an understanding that would accompany these to, to present to the town, and I have, I did look for, and I looked at, that I've read the MOU, or MOA, for the affordable housing that's posted, I think it was June 6th, on the website, which is, of course, not yet agreed to, which makes this a much better product for the town. This is an overlay that affects many landowners, in addition to the people, the people who most people associate this with is the Capital Group, but it affects others as well. In the absence of the MOA, I talked to and looked at DHCD, so if people vote for this without that, my understanding is, and there is 339 units that are allowed.
But you said you saw the MOA, didn't you?
June 6th, it's not signed, it doesn't mean anything.
Right, but that's where, I believe, and this is a procedural thing, not relevant to this motion, we'll be discussing MOUs and MOAs after we've dealt with the warrant at another meeting.
But not at this meeting, right?
Right.
I'd like to hear it.
No, no, I, I just want to be clear with folks about the process.
So as we, so as, so as I need to deal with what we have now, and what is tangible, t's crossed out of this, it is Capital Group's job to work in the best interest of Capital Group, but I do not begrudge them, they're excellent business people, smart business people, it's ours for the best interest of the town. What I have seen in the absence of this is, this allows for 339 units of housing, whether or not that is ever built or not, the market will determine, and among other things that I think is concerning. Now, that said, I think we do need to endorse 40Rs in areas like Decam and Atlantic Union and other areas. I'm not sure the way this is written right now is in the best interest of the town, and we do not have that MOA that Jason and I and the other boards had promised that we would have, so for that reason, I am not going to support, support this article. I do support 40R overlays, 40R.
So let me understand, so when the vote is called, you're not just opposing it at the town meeting, but you don't even want the voters to vote on it? This is, this vote is just about putting it on the warrant?
No, I understand that, so putting something on the warrant is, is step, I don't think that I personally, and maybe the board, have had, have lived up to the promise of having an MOA and substantive discussions ahead of time. Our town meeting is in 14 days, and there's still a lot of discussion about the MOAs we talked about, and MOUs and so on. If we put this on the warrant.
Well, it's, to be clear, it's on the warrant, it's just a matter of whether or not we're going to recommend.
Well, we haven't approved a warrant yet, so it's on the draft, to be clear.
Right, the warrant's closed, so we would have to reopen the warrant.
My understanding is that we vote not to include this article, but that's a procedural thing, so, but aside from the procedural, which I'm sure we can work out with Kate in the process, is that this is not, it is not what is advertised, what most people assume, 146 houses and so on, the way it is, so I think it would be difficult for the town.
I just wanted to clarify what you were saying, you were voting yes or no, that's totally fine, I appreciate it. Any further comment? All right, the motion is for the Select Board to recommend affirmative action on the article at the special town meeting, Article 3, okay? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So the recommendation is affirmative with a 2 to 1 to 0 vote. All right, Article 4, the Enterprise Rezone, sponsored by the Select Board, to see if the town will vote to amend the official zoning map of the town of Lancaster, 220, Attachment 2, by rezoning a portion of the parcel identified as Assessor's Map 8, Lot 45 of Lancaster, located within the residential district to the enterprise district, such that the entirety of said parcel is located within the enterprise district, and as further shown on a plan entitled, quote, "Proposed Rezoning Plan Lancaster MA," end quote dated 8/31/22, and on file with the town clerk, or act in any manner relating thereto.
I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article 4 at special town meeting on November 14th, 2022.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the article? I assume so.
Yes, so first, I'd like to call, call attention to the Planning Board recommendation, which states in favor, I think that's important for all residents to know. I'd like to talk a little bit about the MOA, I'm much, I'm much closer to this one, so I want to thank Kate for her hard work in meeting with the landowner and developer on this, and, you know, I think the latest draft came in Friday, and it's pretty good. I think that it does a lot of things for the town. First, that it does, that's important, is it talks about uses, right? So now we have uses for what will be done on that property for the rezone. Next is traffic mitigation, we will have an understanding of traffic mitigation throughout the property, and I think those are the two most important things. Next, that's positive about the MOA is it talks about the potential buildout. Now, yes, we don't know exactly where each brick will go, but we do have a decent understanding of 2.4 million square feet. In addition, there is language in there of how to make any changes to that type of plan, but it's also critical to understand that the landowner and developer still have to follow all of our bylaws and go through all of our boards and all state agencies, and, and it's not, it's not perfect, and I want to talk a little bit about that, and the reason I want to talk about why it's not perfect is so all residents have an understanding of, of what we, we as a town, we will be voting on. My greatest concern about the MOA is that it is a right of the developer to build, it is not a requirement for the developer to build, and I just want to express for the record my concern, which is, what if the developer chooses not to build? And what if the developer says, okay, the economy is tough, right, building materials are expensive, and all of a sudden now, we're two years down the road, and the developer comes back and wants to renegotiate that deal, or heaven forbid, they ask for a tax break or a TIF or something along those lines, and we have not at that point realized any of the revenue, however, we have to, we have to figure that out, and, and I think that's just something that all residents need to understand, but I don't, I don't believe that's a deal breaker. I believe that it's something that residents should consider when they go to town meeting, but as far as the Select Board, this is the future of our Lancaster, it's talked about in our Town Master Plan, it's talked about in our Economic Development Plan, this is what we have prescribed ourselves in those plans for moving forward, and this article, as, as addition to Article 3 and the MOA, gives every resident a chance to vote, and it is not a majority, it is a supermajority, which means 2/3 of all of the residents have to, have to make it pass, and that is a high bar. So if residents, if you're passionate about this, and I, I can tell by the signs that I lost count of in town, that there are a tremendous number of residents who are for this, and as an individual member of the Select Board, I'm also for this. Thank you.
I will just say, thank, I identify myself with the remarks from the gentleman from Brockhamon Road, except for the fact that it's 2/3 of the folks at the meeting.
Correct.
Very important fact, making sure people show up at the meeting, 2/3 of the voters from town who come to the most democratic form of government are open town meeting. Any further discussion?
Oh, yeah, of course.
Okay.
So, once again, I think we fell down, myself included, in making sure that we had a substantive MO, a good MOA that's advertised to people. I received it, I don't even think, I haven't seen it, it could be out there publicly, did it get up?
It is.
Okay, because I know people were looking, but I got it Friday, I received this Friday, so we haven't, it certainly hasn't been there. I thank Kate for, in her busy schedule, fitting in the work, because she got it sort of in the 11th hour after lots of very able negotiation with the MOA committee, and then Jason is our, as our negotiator. Honestly, the way I looked at this MOA, what I saw was worse than if we did not have an MOA, so I do not, I do not oppose expanding industrial zoning, in fact, or easy zoning, I think that we should expand it further, there's land up there that is not covered, and I'd like to look at other areas of town, but that's not here, but my point is, are we going to get development up there? Yes, we all want, what we're looking for, the purpose of this is to bring tax relief and to bring revenue into town, and I think that's one thing that probably everybody agreed on, you'd have signs in every year, tax release, if we, if we had that. I think we should be doing that through well-fought, honest, direct zoning, rather than side agreements that apply to one or two people. In the case of easy zoning, this zoning, it allows, this zoning allows for things that are not taxable, we've seen a lot of our land that would be most best suited to develop, such as the things off of Loonerburg Road to the north, the iPod, so on, being gobbled up with residential houses, very little. What people look to is the Golf Center, which is an easy property, is a solar farm, that's completely allowed in this, open stockpile, playing fields, in fact, many of the uses that we are turning on is, will not help our tax base, will actually even erode our tax base. The biggest, one of the biggest concern that I have with this is that Capital Group asked to, and we will agree if we sign it, to arbitration, which means that we will not, we will essentially waive our risk to formal adjudication in a court process.
Only in specific categories.
I think that that is, I think that greatly weakens it. I think the 120-day turnaround requirement to get our, to get our funding or our sugar that everybody wants is, which I see in there, is not, Kate's nodding her head, no, but I've, I read that, we can talk about this, so obviously, we haven't had time to meet and talk about this, but the 120-day turnaround that I read about is unrealistic, there's a project right now in front of the ZBA, which everybody pretty much agrees on, I believe, and that's been in process, the affordable housing at Jones Crossing, which has been before them for five months, and MIPA alone could take 120 days, and the way I read.
Just, I want to be very clear, I don't think you want to leave people to supposition that the Jones Crossing projects dealt with, since you just declared it was basically agreed on by everybody, so you just have to.
No, 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 no. That's also a misrepresentation, representation of what's in there, that, that, that doesn't bind the town to complete any permitting within an amount of time.
Again, I'll just remind folks that, I just wanted to clarify that for the people watching, that the, that that project isn't grainlit by everybody, so that's, and also, this vote, and this motion on table is about whether or not the board is going to recommend, not about the MOA, so I don't want to get into the details of the MOA in this discussion.
No, but for years, we have tied the two together, and given our past, the board's, Jason J. and I, past affirmation that we would tell people, we would forward the article with an MOA in advance, so they could see it and talk about it, so we're in, I understand the chicken and the egg kind of thing.
They will have that, I'm just saying, this, the motion that we're discussing is not related to, to specific parts of an MOA.
It is, because once this goes on.
I just want to say, it's not, the, the motion is on whether or not, I just want to be very clear from a, from a process perspective, about whether or not we're favorably recommending.
I understand process, so the substance is that they are, that they are, everybody knows, and everybody's yearning for a good MOA, they're, they're very much tied together, so, in a way, I have read it, and again, in the time that has been a lot, Friday night, and yes, we've all been busy with things, but I have done a lot of, look, in fact, I have things, I'm sure, longer than the motion that we just waived to read, notes about things that I am concerned about, including even the parties that are included to it.
Right, which is totally, yeah, but I'm going to say that comments have to stay relevant to the motion that's on the table.
So, and we talked about, you know, there's unfair, just that. So, and we talked about, you know, there's unfair discussion, allow me to ramble if I must, but the point is that once this reaches the town meeting, people have the option of voting on it, even if we recommend it after you-
Yes, we can recommend it negatively, and they have a chance to run on it.
Right, as they should, as they should be able to. So, but we, our job, Capital Group's job is to advocate for capital, our system to advocate for the town.
Understood.
So if we see major problems such as arbitration, timeframes, concessions-
And I want to be very clear, we have not voted as a board to recommend an MOA-
Or not recommend, I understand that.
So that will be taken up at a future meeting.
You have said that, right, you've said that.
This is the issue that we-
But it is relevant to me, because the easy, I said at the beginning, that the easy zoning, which was the model that they chose to request, that we chose to sponsor, allows for many non-taxable things. Now, I think we all hope and agree that we would have something that is, and hope is a powerful word, that we would hope that we would have something taxable, so.
I would just point out that the motion that's on the floor, again, is just about whether or not we will affirmatively recommend this.
I understand that, and that's why I'm talking about my thoughts about that, and trying to.
Got it. But I don't think this is the, this is not the format, I said at the very beginning, it's not the place to litigate the parts of the MOA.
To talk about why I like this, we're talking about EZ right now, I was talking about EZs.
I understand that, I understand.
So, so the point is that, and they are linked, but the point is even on the base, do I think we should expand the industrial zoning up there and have less residential in the area? Yes, I think we should have more tax-positive, revenue-positive lands made available there, including this and other parcels, which are still zoned residential. So, I will not be supporting this for the reason that it is tied to what I think is a, not a beneficial MOA.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I kind of want to add a little bit, not to blabber, but one reason I'm-
I just, I will caution that, just I cautioned her, we don't want to get in specifics of the MOA that-
Yeah, why? Why? I think, I think we as a board, in my opinion, should be proud of endorsing this article.
Agreed.
Let's talk about what it means to endorse this article. It doesn't mean that it's agreed upon today, it means it goes to town meeting and residents hear our opinion. So why am I proud to endorse this? I'm proud to endorse this because we now have time for any finalization of the MOA. We have time to debate the MOA. I think this board should be beyond ecstatic that it's not the last second at the meeting, here's your draft, everybody read it, and everybody guess. This board has now allowed residents to debate for two weeks. Go go to your social medias, your snapgram's, your Insta books, whatever it is you go to, and talk, and have it out, and that's a positive thing, so.
When I write down snappergram?
Actually, it came up in the transcript as not even that word at all, so I can't wait till-
Yeah, can't wait to see what it is.
So, right, so this is giving the residents a chance to vote on this article and endorsing it in front of them, and now we have time to talk about what we like and don't like.
Indeed.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion on the motion?
Excuse me, there needs to be a correction on the article, you also have an update of Cashman Four.
Okay, thank you.
Which is two.
I appreciate it. When I say any discussion on the motion, I mean with the Select Board, thank you, I appreciate it. Indeed, you are, but that's okay, I won't hold it against you. Any further discussion on the motion from the Select Board?
Yeah, so Jason, thank you for your comment. I agree with you in principle, the time I hope we make, I don't think we have the time that is a dessert, however, which is why I'm so concerned. And crowdsourcing things is difficult if people don't have solid information, so I hope that when this passes, which it will, that we endeavor to have meetings Wednesday prior to the Thursday meeting and other meetings, so we can really sit down and begin to look at this in greater detail and talk about it publicly, because there are many things to be talked about Wednesday and Thursday and beyond, to make sure that-
Are you recommending, well, let's, we can have that at the very end of the meeting, because that's not relevant to the motion.
Yes.
Hearing no further discussion on the motion, all those in favor, see if I was saying aye, aye, all is opposed?
Aye.
Okay, two, one, zero, favorable recommendation. Thank you. Article Five, this is a Scrivener's error-
I move that we do not need to read Article Five.
Thank you, is there any, is a second on that?
Oh, second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we waive the reading of the motion.
I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article Five at Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Sounds good.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion, this is simply what it is, it was a mistake made and we're correcting it, and it was discussed at the planning board last-
Two thousand thirteen, Article eighteen was already approved, we just never inserted the language behind the S, correct?
Ah, copy, okay.
It's the famous chicken by law.
Exactly, the chicken by law, which we don't want to-
Move the question.
Exactly, we don't want to reopen that. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three, zero, zero in favor. Huzzah. Article Six.
I move that we not need to read Article Six.
Got it, a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, okay, is there a motion?
I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article Six at Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
This is again a fix that is relatively simple, that the planning board took up and recommends in favor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three, zero, zero. Article Seven.
I move to waive the right, we need to read Article Seven.
Got it.
Second, I would up a minute, why don't we offer a motion to waive all reading?
Well, let's just, we're now in this motion, but then at the next one, you can just go right on through if you like.
Okay.
So, okay, is there a-
Second.
Aye, aye, aye on waiving the reading.
I waive, and I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article Seven at Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I do have questions.
Oh, wait, oh, sorry, sorry, never mind, I rushed us.
Yes.
Discussion, yes, hit it.
I do have questions about this. So this allows, the planning board drafted this and forwarded this, and it allows for battery storage or large storage, particularly in the same areas that we're talking about.
And then there was light.
Yes, thank you, that's much better. And I have questions about things like working, how this works with, and I don't think, I know I, last minute I had written Kate about Jasmine or Brian, I'm assuming that they've reviewed this.
Well, it was considered at the planning board meeting, the hearing.
Right, yep.
And-
Things like fires, you know, these, looking at these, which are new to me, they do require some different sort of fire suppression.
They definitely discussed that at the hearing, and provisions were made to ensure that that was covered, yep.
And the interconnect and how that-
And I'm not an expert on this, I'm just remembering from the meeting, sorry.
Yes.
Make sure I'm very clear.
Yes.
Don't underestimate, I'm a planning expert, by stretch.
So in our meeting on Thursday, perhaps we can have some more detail and talk about that in conjunction with the planning boards, I think, yes, I saw the hearing.
Sure, okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, now, for Articles Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven.
I'll offer a motion to waive the reading of the Articles Eight, Nine, Ten, Eleven.
Second.
So discussion on the motion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, there's waiving the readings, now we'll just take them-
I move for the board to recommend action on Article Number Eight at Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor, oh, any discussion on the motion?
Yeah, Kate, I read, I looked through this, and for the most part, to me, this looks like it is increasing our spending that we go to for twenty twenty-three to allow for increase in mostly in energy costs.
Correct.
The one question I had is the DPW snow and ice, we were allowed to spend, deficit spend in that line, I understand, and typically we do, we underbudget that, but there is still a large increase in salt, and just what was the, because we don't know what the weather will bring, what was that, just to have it there?
We went out to bid for the first amount, DPW always gets their first load of salt in October, because sometimes there can be October, November storms, and it was three times the amount of usual, so we don't believe that trend will stop or diminish. So we are revising the number that was proposed basically a year ago to be more in line with what quotes are coming in at.
Okay, that's, I think that that's a good idea. We have traditionally underbudgeted that in deficit spend, which as we are allowed to, but I wonder, but this year it looks like we're doing more, trying to truthfully budget that, which is, which is good, okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so, three, zero, zero.
That was Article Eight?
Yep.
All right, I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article Nine at Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Kate, want to run through what this is for, just to make-
Sure, actually, it will be amended one step further, we learned late that the ten-thousand-dollar request for the loader bucket will be taken off as that piece of equipment sold to another community before we had a chance to act, obviously. So the other is being able to use Chapter Ninety funds, so this is not tax dollars, but Chapter Ninety is a reimbursement, and so DPW requires basically a transfer of available funds to be able to appropriate the money to then spend. Once we spend the fifty thousand dollars on the piece of equipment, that's submitted to the state, and the state will reimburse its amount.
Be very clear, it's tax dollars, just not property tax dollars, state tax dollars.
State tax.
Right. Kate, how much are we given in chapter money in total? Because I know each town has allocated a certain amount, I don't know what it is recently.
I'm not sure I know that off the top of my head, but I can get it.
Okay.
I believe it's in the neighborhood of maybe a hundred and twenty thousand or so.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Uh, no.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Article Ten.
I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article Ten at Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Kate, do you want to give us the elevator pitch on this?
Yep. So this is connection charges, so essentially it's balancing the budget out, the water enterprise amount has gone up, so we are going to be seeing an additional appropriation for spending there, but then we're offsetting that with an additional collection of fees.
Copy. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three, zero, zero. Article Eleven.
I move for the board to recommend affirmative action on Article Eleven at Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing-
Yeah, I think it's important we could talk about it at the forum, I think it's important because we've been to town meeting to remove ourselves from civil service-
A couple times now, yeah.
Three times now, right? And I note that this is exclusively for the chief, although town meeting voted overwhelmingly to remove the whole department, including the chief, but this is in order, my understanding is, discussing with people, that this is in order to expedite the removal of the chief-
Yes.
Because of the complications-
And I will say, the legislature-
Legislative complications due to posts, which is the police reform.
Yes, and so they are considering many more communities than ours at once, and they're trying to hold off on that until they put the police reform actions in place, therefore delaying our process here, this at least keeps us moving down the road.
So this is essentially, sort of like the election, we're affirming what people have already said.
Yes, this will still require an act of legislature, but it's easier to get done because it's not impacted by the police reform bill.
Okay, so the next steps, Kate, is this just goes right back to the legislature for there?
It goes to, this act wouldn't have gone yet, so this goes to them-
Right.
From the town, and then hopefully gets passed and made in form of a-
I had many conversations with our state rep who's going to help us expedite this.
And our state senator, we are good to go. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, three, zero, zero. Okay, that takes care of the warrants. From a process perspective, anything else we need to do on this right now?
No.
People want to sign it when it's in final form?
No, I need you.
To sign the signature page, copy.
If this be time to suggest that we have a meeting prior to our Thursday meeting, so we can talk about-
Prior to the, to the, what is it called?
Say on Wednesday, if we post something now for Wednesday evening to talk about the MOU.
We're going to just do that on November seventh, yeah, meeting then, that's on the, that's going to be on the agenda for that. I can't do a meeting on Wednesday.
There's multiple copies of-
I'm sorry.
Oh, I only said one.
Yeah, we just finish it on the other end.
And just do all the ones. So I can't make a meeting on Wednesday. But, so let me just finish the things we got to cover for this, that the question has been raised, that's fully done, about whether or not we would consider paper ballots for some or all of the warrant articles at the Special Town Meeting on November fourteenth, and it was requested that we at least have, we as the Select Board have a conversation about what our feelings are on the issue.
Who requested?
The discussion came through a conversation as we were planning for the meeting with the town moderator.
Oh, the town moderator.
Town moderator has heard from citizens that there would be requests, as we all know, at any town meeting, a citizen could stand up and request that we go to paper ballots, and the town clerk and the moderator are always prepared for that, but it would be good if we had that information ahead of time, and if, I believe the town moderator is just trying to see if we have a preference. Yes.
I have not heard from any citizens with any issues with any of our voting. My personal opinion is that the clickers have been fantastic.
Oh, we're not using the clickers.
I would then ask why we're not using-
There's a significant cost to using the clickers. We own the clickers, but running the process is about five thousand dollars.
What? When we bought these, we were told that once you bought them-
The company that runs them, because-
They came with, you know, you buy them, you, because we invested a lot of money in clickers.
Okay, okay, so, we need to restate the issue. The issue is not that we want paper ballots, the issue is that too expensive to use our current strategy, and therefore we need a different one.
Well, the current strategy that, the discussion between the town moderator and the town clerk was to do it the old-fashioned way of, all those in favor?
Sure, so it's very possible that at Special Town Meeting, we will have multiple rooms because of overflow.
Yeah, but there's a deputy moderator that gets appointed in that moment, there's, there are provisions are being made to accommodate for that, for sure.
Yeah, and it's going to be challenging for a two-thirds, which is much different than a fifty-fifty, so, and I also believe that we should do everything in our power to help ensure there's not any chance of discrepancy. So that's how I would feel about it, so whatever puts us in the best position to be successful, even if that means it takes a little bit longer to count. Can we do, can we do paper ballots for just some of the articles?
You do it for one, you can do it for eleven.
But just so you know, the clickers do not work in more than one room. We need to purchase another repeater.
Okay.
See, it's interesting, because the clicker is a conversation we should have afterwards, it's a separate one, but it, I thought we could even share and borrow, because other towns have invested, this is the way it was sold to us, so that is kind of, I think people have come to like them, so I'm kind of disappointed about our big investment in the way it's doing it, but we'll-
So, I mean, part of the issue is that we need someone to be trained on the clickers, and we have an individual who is our clicker expert, who is out unexpectedly, so I think we're trying to do our best to make sure that we have something that is workable for the people that are here until we have the individual back from the unexpected absence.
It's a proposal from the moderator.
The moderator would like to, oh, just in generally, the moderator does, would like to have some consensus, he doesn't have one way or the other.
He has no concerns one way or the other.
He has no concerns about paper ballots versus hands, his concern is that he- His concern is that he had a couple of folks that reached out to him.
They just expressed the concern.
That were.
What about town clerk, do they have a preference?
So they, they've, in our meeting with them, and I don't want to jump, but they're in our meeting with them, they will make whatever work, work, like whatever we need to work, work, that we did discuss paper ballots, the interim town clerk said what, you know, we all know to be true, because occasionally paper ballots are required when we're not expecting it, that they will have them available, I think we're having this proactive conversation so that we should have, should people want them for multiple, that we have plenty of paper ballots available. The process to remind folks, to best of my knowledge, is the moderator will appoint people to hand out ballots, or hand them out at the beginning, I can't remember, I think it's just before voting, they go person by person, they hand them out, people fill them in, and then they line up and go down to the front and deposit the ballot themselves, or people who are not able to, someone goes and retrieves their ballot.
So, having not missed a town meeting in, ever, I think, there was an occasion where we had a request during a particularly difficult meeting, where he was out on the floor.
I remember that.
That we were not expecting, and it made the, it was very difficult on the town clerk and the moderator, because we weren't prepared, so if the moderator is asking if we want to be prepared, I think that.
That's not what he's asking.
Always prepared.
We have, we had a meeting with them to prepare for this, and they, they both said they would be prepared for, I believe the town clerk will be prepared for whatever comes.
That's correct.
I think the question just is, do we want to say our preference prior to town meeting on one or all of the articles, that they be a paper ballot? I, I, you know, I don't have a preference on it.
So typically, I prefer precision over accuracy, but in this instance, I would want accuracy.
Now, I mean, let's be very clear, there are counters who are appointed, and in the overflow room, there will be a deputy moderator who will be appointed prior to the meeting starting, who will be in that room, facilitating that room, who will have counters in that room.
I defer to the experts, that's where I stand. I'm not an expert in this field, and I support whomever our staff is that believe the best thing will get us to an accurate representation of this.
And they sounded like they were indifferent from their discussion?
The confident they could deliver an accurate vote regardless of the method, I would say is probably the best way to articulate their position.
That is true.
So it's going to be up to the people?
Or we could determine.
Bill would like to have, I'm sorry, the moderator would like to have some thoughts and directions from the board if.
Accuracy, I vote accuracy.
It's, it's the moderator's decision, but he is engaging us in the conversation, and I greatly appreciate that.
It is, yeah. What is the difference, difference between precision and accuracy?
Precision is like repeatability, so even though you may not be on target, you get the same result each time, where accuracy is, you know, you may not get the exact in the bullseye, but you'll get around the bullseye, so I just, we want accurate, even though it may not be, like, each time we do it, it may be a little weird, but.
The process, sorry.
Yeah, the process.
We're not going to keep voting the same vote, but we're not, that would be bad. So we also don't have to come to a conclusion right now, we could.
I'd like to hear a plan on the seventh, so.
Rediscuss this on the seventh.
Unless someone, I would say we go back to the experts and say, look, we, well, I would say we would want accuracy, y'all are the leaders, we're empowering you to give us an accurate vote, so go do your great.
Yeah, I mean, I will just be very clear, they're already empowered to do it, because it's the town moderator's meeting, they were just wanting our opinion.
I want an accurate vote.
Okay. We still have two weeks, we can, a paper ballot is cumbersome, but something that they can execute on, but we have two weeks to give our thoughts, we could give, we could think on it more and.
I trust that they will handle it either properly, either one, precisely and accurately.
Let me, let me, let me be specific, let me be specific on my comments, so for fifty-fifties, I don't think we need paper ballots. When it comes to a two-thirds votes, then we need to be sure of the accuracy, however they feel it, I mean, if they see a ninety-ten, great, but if they have concerns, we need to be prepared.
And I, and I will say this, I don't believe they were envisioning, I just said one or all, because in reality, one or all, they don't, they, they were asking specifically on the.
The two-thirds votes.
The two-thirds, just to be more, more. I also would, if everyone keeps their hands up, it's pretty easy to count and figure out what's two-thirds of the number of people there.
If people are asking the moderator already, I suspect the request will be made, I mean, it sounds like if there are, I haven't heard it, but to be honest with you, I thought we were using clickers, so I didn't think it was, so I didn't.
Both of you did.
Yeah, so I.
I mean. Well, we didn't know we weren't.
We didn't know.
I asked for a meeting with the moderator, because this will be the two town meeting that I'm going to be seated in my seat, so.
This will be my first town meeting, not have, no, I don't have dummies and clickers.
Couldn't you there in spring, you were kind of, you and Jeff were tag team.
Anyway, all right, so we'll get that, yeah, awesome, well done. Okay, anything else, there's nothing else on the agenda. We do have another, we have our question and answer, what are we calling, Thursday?
Yeah, the warrant review.
The Palooza, warrant review.
But now I'm, I'm very unclear, I was clear from the chair that you wanted that to just be a quick slide, this is what this article does, and then it was not a debate.
It's not a debate.
Now I'm hearing select person Turner wants something either before, during, after, at some point.
Well, not during.
Okay, I know, she didn't say during, but before or at some point, and I'm just, I'm, I just need some clarity on.
Well, then, so I wanted to see if we grabbed everything here first before I turned to your proposal for more meetings, so.
Okay.
So before that, before the more meetings, will, will the, will that forum thingy?
It's a question and answer, warrant review.
Will it have, will it have public comment?
People will ask questions, but it will not be, what we will not entertain is a debate on the merits of a particular warrant, I don't know, call it, it'll be, I have a question about the Chapter ninety money, the valid question, I have a question about the solar array or the batteries.
It just helps me to have the proper staff there to answer, or inform.
And it will be, it will, it will attempt to be as neutral a presentation of the warrant articles as written, so that people understand in plain English, to the extent that we represent plain English in this town, to the townspeople.
Alex, with regard to additional meetings, I sent you the PowerPoint today, so I'll be having at least one Q and A session myself, which will not be an open meeting, but will give residents an opportunity to come and ask me questions about the MOA.
Ms. Sadi, send something over just before this meeting, so I haven't looked at it yet.
Yeah, because I wanted it to be a public record, but I didn't want to be deliberating ahead of time, so now you have the copy of that, but there's not really any opinions in it, it's just what is an MOA and kind of part of the town, so, so I'll have, I've scheduled this room on the, on the second and the ninth, I haven't sent out any notifications yet, it'll just be me, but I'll probably not do the second, and I'll probably just do the ninth, but it'll just be a Q and A session, and that's what I'm doing as an individual member of this level.
And then we have a meeting on the, so we have the third, we have our seventh meeting, where we will discuss.
Is it our expectation that we will be approving, or we will be debating and discussing the merits of the MOA and whether or not we agree to?
It would be my desire to, yes.
Okay, and is it our expectation that out of that meeting, there'll be a go-no-go?
That's the will of the board, yeah.
Okay, but that's, but that's a reasonable?
Could be.
Okay.
I also think it's reasonable that if we have considered, considered more conversation, then that's fine too. But that's just my opinion, it's one of three.
That sounds like a good plan.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's nice, and kudos to you for taking the initiative to inviting people to our Q and A, I can envision that we could, you know, all do our own kind of thing, or people, we're all accessible to people, so we could also do that formally or informally, however, I think people would benefit from us having a more granular, sort of what I won't call a working meeting that we've had in the past, a discussion of, you know, Alex, now you're wrong on this, this is what this really means, perhaps even with the benefit of counsel or somebody else there, so people, when they get to town meeting, we can debate policy, but we should have a common understanding of the facts.
Yeah, it sounds like something great for the seventh, I mean, any questions you have about the MOA, absolutely on the seventh.
Right.
And, you know, I've, I've spoken to residents about the MOA, I'm probably more jaded than the rest of you, because I've been ad-hoc-ing MOA for like eight months, so I've talked about.
Sounds like something you should take as antibiotic.
But, but yeah, I mean, so I've been talking to residents for a long time, I've, I mean, so it's not like, so I guess that's just my position, but to your point, we will have the seventh to have that conversation, and that's really valuable for this board to debate the merits of the MOA.
Indeed.
All of them.
And are we going to give people, because I know they'll have it at town meeting, and we're not going to take that away.
Take what away?
The right to debate and so on, just like to have people go in as.
The legislature, yeah.
Yeah, I love people to be able to go in as.
But I would point out, town meeting, the MOA won't be on the warrant.
Yeah.
I understand that, yeah, I get that, but it will certainly influence people's.
I hope so.
Yeah.
Perspective.
But I, my, my understanding is the moderator will do as moderators do, which is keep to the task of, of the warrant, not stray too far afield.
I understand that, but we want people to be influenced with as much knowledge, and I know.
That's why I stated earlier, I'm so proud that we have a version of the MOA out now, there's two weeks for residents to discuss about it, plus we've got one week, we'll talk about it on the seventh, I think we should be proud that it's not the last second.
That's great.
Should have ourselves.
I am glad it's out ahead of time, I wish, you know, wishes and wishes or whatever, you know, wish we had it ahead, but we can do it, no fault of anybody, no fault of yours or Kate's, Kate, thank you, Kate hustled, and I know you tried, and your committee tried.
Worked very hard, this committee worked very hard, huge fight.
No, no, no. So, Kate, you want, that one of the elephants in the room here is we have an MOU, MOA committee who have recommendation.
You're looking for elephants?
Don't talk about it the way, but anyway, so one of the, is we have an MOU, MOA committee and votes and so on, I think we, my personal preference would be that we included them in this discussion, or include some of that, they are an advisory committee to us, and they have made, you know, their advice, and people can look back.
That's exactly what they did, and they referred it, they gave it back to the board and Kate, so, and that's exactly what we did.
So, so at this point, do we, not on this agenda, but do we disband them, do we talk about?
Well, ad hoc committees are always disbanded once the purpose for which they were created is done, and so once they kicked.
They don't need to vote to do it, they've delivered.
Once they deliver the product to Kate.
Their vote at the last meeting, which I was not at, that's like when you get a letter to Kate.
That's usually how it happens.
That it came over here.
In, in an effort to make sure that we are not doing anything we shouldn't be, once maybe the MOA is exercised, should it be exercised, then I think it would make a lot of sense for the committee to go away, but as of today, there is still outstanding MOA, we'll talk about on the seventh.
Until it's signed, yeah, they are.
I mean, technically, it depends on what their charge was, I wasn't here when they were created, so.
But Alex, if, for example, on Friday, when I received the MOA, I've spoken to lots of different people, and some of them were on the MOA committee about it, so you should feel comfortable reaching out to any individual member and asking them any questions you want, including residents, I've probably spoken to twenty already, and, yeah, I, I have personally been, what would be that word, like, not renewed or refreshed, but reminded how passionate our residents are about the future of Lancaster, and so I've just been surprised at the outpouring of desire for it.
I'm excited that, ah, the residents get a chance to vote as well, so.